Good evening. I'd like to call to order the February 12th Seattle, or Seattle promoted us, Issaquah City Council Services and Safety Committee. My name is Chris Ray. I am the chair. With me this evening is Councilmember Lindsey Walsh, our new council member and new committee member. Deputy President Baptiste is running a little bit late and will be joining us shortly. This evening's agenda, we have two items. One is Agenda Bill 7702 Criminal Code Amending IMC 9.05 and Agenda Bill 7723 Cemetery Fee Increase Amending IMC 2.20.040. And Deputy Council President Baptiste has joined us. Welcome.
Yes.
Before we get into regular business, I'm just taking advantage of having the microphone here and I just wanted to do a big shout out to Issaquah Police Department and also Issaquah Public Works Operations for the fantastic job they have done in keeping us safe and our roads clear during the recent inclement weather. It goes noticed and it is greatly appreciated. So with that, let us get on to business. Agenda Bill 7702 Criminal Code Amending IMC 9.05. We have Commander Chris Wilson from the Police Department and Lynn Moberly, City Prosecutor. So welcome and turn it over to you guys.
Yeah, so thanks for having us. We're here today to present the agenda bill and seeking the council to adopt sections of the state statute into the Issaquah Municipal Code, specifically codes from RCW that are criminal attempt and criminal conspiracy. And just a quick background on this, back in 1985, the council adopted the RCW of the codes I just mentioned into the Issaquah Criminal Code. And for some reason, we're not really sure why, there was very small portions of the RCW that were left out of the adopted IMC. So and I think Lynn can speak to why this has come up and the ramifications that we're seeking to adopt.
Thank you. As indicated, I am Lynn Moberly. I have been your contact city prosecutor for many years. That means I'm responsible for prosecuting all cases that are nonfelonies. So any misdemeanors or gross misdemeanors that happen within the city of Issaquah come to my office. As Chris indicated, the Issaquah Municipal Code, which we call the IMC, is a set of laws that govern what we charge when people break the law in our city. Most of the Issaquah Municipal Codes comes from the state statutes. The state statutes are found in the Revised Code of Washington, which we call the RCWs. We have some cases, crimes, that are just Issaquah Municipal Code, but predominantly and for reasons of uniformity, most cities adopt straight out of the Revised Code of Washington. In early November, I was actually notified by a defense attorney that was doing some completely unrelated research on a different legal issue, that there was a section, just one section of a particular RCW that Chris mentioned that we have adopted, and that is 9828020, that gives me, or us I should say, the ability to charge a person with an attempt of a higher crime. So specifically, if you committed a, tried to commit a Class C felony, but you weren't able to actually finish it, then you commit what's called an attempted Class C felony. And under the law, what, you might say, well, what's an attempt? Because that's a really good question. But the jury instruction in the law is that if you, a person tries to take a substantial step towards the commission of a crime, but for whatever reason, they're unable to accomplish that crime completely, then they would be charged with an attempt of that higher crime. So once I was notified that that was a potential issue, obviously, the first thing I did was open the Issaquah Municipal Code and say, there is a small section that is Section 3D that allows me to prosecute gross misdemeanors that are, again, substantial steps towards the commission of that Class C felony that was not adopted. So my immediate reaction was to reach out to our city attorney, see if he had any insight. He still works for the firm that actually did some of the significant adoptions of the RCW back in the 80s. And his research indicated to me that he could find that it was in, as Chris indicated, Commander Wilson indicated, that in 1985, all portions of 9828020, which is the criminal attempt laws, as well as 9828040, the criminal conspiracy laws, which are, mirror each other quite closely, were adopted, but oddly enough, Section 3D was left out. On further research, he said, I can't give you an answer why. There was no computers, there's no notes, there's no minutes back in 1985, but there was nothing at all that he could find that would indicate that this was an intentional omission. And we've talked about it, we've debated, could there be a reason? Could there be a financial reason? And we've all come to the bottom line of that there would be no reason to leave out this important section of crimes that now often many times come to us based upon changing standards within the King County Prosecutor's Office with their budgetary constraints. More cases are coming to us, and cases that maybe even are a Class C felony, but they won't take because of their budgets, come to me to charge as an attempt. So what we're here to do is basically fix something that we weren't really sure was broken and give me the tools so that I can properly hold people accountable for attempting to commit Class C felonies.
Thank you. Questions? Deputy President Baptiste?
Thanks for coming tonight and thank you for your presentation. So just curious, so this really just hadn't come up in terms of someone potentially being prosecuted for an attempted crime? So it hadn't really come up?
We knew that when you look at the Issaquah Municipal Code, you'll see attempt. And it is, each, it is, if you take a substantial step towards the commission of a crime, like say, a Class A crime, it becomes a Class B. If you take a substantial step to commit a Class B, it becomes a Class C. If you take a substantial step to commit a Class C, it becomes a gross misdemeanor. And then there's a further section that if you take a substantial step at committing a gross misdemeanor, it becomes a simple misdemeanor. They adopted that. So I have been appropriately prosecuting a certain portion, which are Class C, or excuse me, gross misdemeanors, attempts down that make them down to misdemeanors. So everything goes down one level.
Got it.
And quite frankly, when you would open and see that it says criminal attempt, and it's there, there's this little D, 3D, that unfortunately wasn't there. And it's, first time it's come to, I think, our attention.
I think, just to add to that, what we had talked about is that it's a statute that anyone working in our business, you would just assume it's there and that you would never think that just one little point would be missing and there's no reason why. It's just, most of these statutes, they're all pretty uniformed, and for one, just to be missing is extremely unusual. So that's maybe why it hasn't come up, because they're always there, right? And it's just mostly there.
As far as we can see, it was an oversight.
Yeah.
Councilmember Walsh?
So given that we do have computers now and that the code is very uniform between cities and comes from the state, is there a way to do kind of a brute force comparison to see if there are any other areas that are missing?
I know those, that we have done that in the past. I've worked in conjunction with the city attorney to go through things in the past. This is one that we've never even, like, never even thought to look at. There's unique crimes that we perhaps haven't adopted, but maybe we think maybe we should have, like impersonating a police officer. It happens so rarely that some cities just haven't adopted it. I'm just using that as an example because it came to my attention recently. But this is something that's such a basic tool that we use when I probably charge an attempt almost every day, that, no, I was just, quite frankly, I think it was missed back in 1985 and got our attention. But yes, is, I think, I should say, I think it's, would be much easier now to go back and just make sure that we have adopted every single line-by-line action that we should. And I can certainly be, I'd certainly offer my services to do that if I'm asked, and in conjunction with working with the city attorney. And I think that's a really good idea. I don't want to be here doing this again.
Any questions? Any comments, deliberation, thoughts? Deputy President Baptiste?
Well, I just wanted to actually, Councilmember Walsh's comment regarding going through the code, that was what was in my mind as well, is that just sort of going through an audit and making sure that, if that's the intent, that we really are meeting the code. But to me, this makes really good sense, that we would, that we would want to be able to mirror that, and we would want to have that language appropriately added at this point, since we've been.
So I think that this clearly was, it seems apparent to me that this was missed as an oversight and it wasn't, there was some intent to make Section D an intentional omission. And I'm glad that you identified it. I am glad that we can give you, we should give you the tools back so that you can do your job. And I think this is something that we need to push to the council sooner, as soon as possible, to get action taken on this. So with that, I'm gonna make a motion that we recommend to the full council to adopt...
AB 7702.
Yeah, I was looking for the ordinance, but I'll take AB 7702 Criminal Code Amending IMC 9.05. All in favor?
Hi.
Can we put this on consent?
You know, typically, I would say yes. I just think in light of, in light of the content, I would, I would just like to give it a highlight. I think it'll be a very brief conversation, but it seems like it should be a brief section on regular business to me.
Okay, well, it's, let us put it on regular business for the February 19th full council meeting.
You mean, we come back?
You mean, you come back.
Okay, just wanted to clarify. That's what I thought.
All right. Well, Lynn and Chris, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you very much for having us.
All right. Moving on to our next bit of business, we have Agenda Bill 7723 Cemetery Fee Increases Amending IMC 2.20.040. And we have Parks and Rec Deputy Director Brian Bernstein with us tonight.
Thank you for having me.
We're glad you're here. And now either even glad are you.
There we go. Thank you for having me. Yeah, as you said, I'm Brian Bernstein. I'm your Deputy Director for the Parks and Recreation Department, and tonight, we're discussing a proposed cemetery fee increase. This conversation's gonna be, you know, it's part of multiple conversations that'll be coming to council later this year. Tonight's conversation is about the Cemetery Board's recommendation to increase the cemetery fee structure to better align with the market rate of similar services provided by other agencies. A little bit of a background on the cemetery is that the, you know, the city owns and maintains two cemeteries on Squawk Mountain. They're adjacent to one another, and they're known as the Upper and Lower Hillside Cemeteries. The administration of the cemeteries is vested in a cemetery board that's responsible for the care, improvement, and use of the cemetery properties, and that's a citizen, you know, citizen participation. The city has been working with its cemetery partner, Flintoff's Fremo Home Crematory, since 1938, providing services, cemetery services on these sites. The city has a cemetery fund established to address the near and long-term care of these properties, and that's based on a full cost recovery model. Coming to you later this, I just want to give you a little preview of what's coming up and coming down the road for council later this year. It's not, it's not part of tonight's proposal or part of our request, but just wanted to give you a little bit of a heads up is, one of our 2019 work plans that our park director, Jeff Watling, and I have been working with our cemetery partner on is to formalize a management agreement between our two parties to consider the long-term financial health of the cemetery fund in and of itself. Our work plan goals, provide cemetery, cemetery maintenance agreement along with a revenue plan for the long-term health and care of these facilities. That will be presented to you later this year. Working with the cemetery partner, the revenue plan includes sort of a look down the road to determine what resources would be needed to care for these facilities once all the plots have been sold, and revenue would no longer be recognized through those sales. The goal of the revenue plan is to address the operational, capital, and long-term stewardship of the cemetery, sort of three different buckets, if you would, right? The operational for just the day-to-day maintenance and operations of the facility, capital improvements, be it either for future growth and/or existing capital needs through any damage or whatnot that might happen and or occur, and then the long-term stewardship of that fund. The city is in a good position right now to review the long-term financial health of these facilities, as at this time, we have one remaining portion, which is Section 2 of the Upper Hillside Cemetery, that has not been opened up quite yet, and that has a number of plots available. So when it's open, there's a number of spaces there that will be, come open for sale. Taking a more focused look at this last remaining space and the balance of the cemetery fund, you know, show that currently, the fund is not well-positioned to provide for the long-term care of these facilities. As such, the revenue plan may include the need for additional fee increases that would be presented to council later this year. As we've shared this information with the cemetery board, the cemetery board wanted to present you with the proposed fee increases with the understanding that later this year, a partnership agreement with Flintoff's, along with a revenue plan for the future health of the cemeteries is coming. They wanted to be clear just that, you know, they wanted to have the fee increases, but they also wanted to let you know sort of what's coming down that road. Before you deny it, as a proposal seeking council adoption of ordinance on Exhibit A to amend Section 2.20.040 of the Issaquah Municipal Code in order to increase grave plot and maintenance fees and to establish a processing fee for all grave types for administrative transactions such as transfers and quitclaim deeds. Just a quick note too, just for reference, is that last time we increased plot sales was in 2009, and last time we increased maintenance fees was in 2014. So it's been a little while on those two.
Okay. Any questions for Brian? Deputy President Baptiste?
Thanks for the presentation and coming in this evening. So when, just when I'm looking at the changes to the maintenance fees and the grave plots, so just in finding those numbers, were, was there a lot of discussion around exactly how much to increase that? Could you speak to that a little bit? And then finding that, that spot?
Yeah, great question. Great question. We worked with our cemetery partner, who works with a lot, we, the cemetery board spent a number of meetings. Our cemetery partner provided a list of similar sites, both privately and publicly owned, to look at what that market rate was. And that's how they determined what that, you know, depending on what you do, there's some that are really high, some that are really, no, not really low, but we're within market, definitely, within that range of, and I think, gosh, we must have looked at probably 20 different, 15, 20 different cemeteries that, like I said, they discussed, and that's how, did I answer your question, or?
Yeah, I just wanted to see if there had been any analysis around looking at what other?
Lots of it, yeah.
Right. What other cemeteries might be charging and whether we're sort of within that, that range?
And most definitely within that range, yeah. And there was a lot of discussion on that. It was, you know, looking at the public, and that's looking at public and private too, but we're well within the range with comparative to other cities that operate and run cemeteries.
Thank you.
And the private sector just is significantly more expensive.
Okay.
No, go for it.
I have a bunch. So you mentioned that we have a revenue plan that's coming down the pike later this year?
Yeah.
And we have these fee increases. Why did you separate them into two separate discussions? They seem awfully linked to me, so I just want to understand your thinking.
You mean, as far as why are we doing a fee increase now and then the others later?
Yes.
Yeah, our cemetery board wanted to increase the cemetery fees now, recognizing that they were quite a bit out of market, and that's why we wanted to call out, and they wanted to be sure that it was called out as two separate things. So you knew that as we're developing this plan, because we don't have that revenue plan created yet, we're working with our cemetery partner. It's being done in conjunction with developing our cemetery partner agreement. So at that time, we're looking at, you know, opening up that Section 2 of Upper Hillside Cemetery, what do those fees look like going forward with the end, with the long-term sustainability of that fund for caring for that facility in the long term?
When do we expect that we'll have the revenue plan and the cemetery partner agreement?
We're looking to have that before council around June or July of this year.
And I think you mentioned that we were kind of in the market for, market rate for spots in our cemetery with other municipal cemeteries?
Yes, sir.
Do you have data? Can you provide us some, you know, here's what Auburn has, and here's what Redmond has?
I'd be happy to. Would you like me to email that to you?
That would be great.
Absolutely.
Send it to all of us. And then, does the revenue plan then talk to the long-range vision for the cemetery and how we deal with long-term funding issues? And, you know, how do we get to the discussion around, does the cemetery, is the cemetery a self-sustaining entity, or is it something that the city subsidizes over time? Is that gonna, is that part of the revenue plan?
That will be part of that discussion, that revenue plan. As, you know, as mentioned, there's those three buckets, right? We have the operational, the capital, and then the long term. And currently, where our cemetery fund is sitting is we're covering our operational really well, and we have money for capital. It's that long-term piece that, once all the plot sales are sold, that long-term piece, call it an endowment fund or whatnot, but having some money that would carry it beyond for the long-term care and maintenance is what we're looking at. And how can we achieve that without having the city subsidizing that?
And now we have Jeff Watling joining us.
Sorry. Phone a friend.
Come on in.
No, thank you, Brian. Great, great highlight. I just wanted to emphasize too, within this bigger picture conversation we're having with Flintoff's and the Cemetery Board, and we'll be bringing to you, is this reality that we're assuming within this revenue plan, a financial model that relies on the existing footprint of the cemetery? So we're not looking at expansion. We want to come up with a revenue model that allows for the cemetery and that cemetery fund to have enough investment in it, once all the plots are sold, that we're looking at multiple years of ongoing stewardship. And so the revenue plan will take that as a goal, then we'll be able to, I think, deduce from that goal, should the city want to consider more of a subsidized model than an enterprise model, which I think you're sort of asking, Councilmember Ray, you know, the subsequent fees that would, that fee increase that would likely be coming as part of that revenue plan could be modified accordingly. So that policy discussion will very much be part of what we'll start doing in June and July with you.
Great. You know, is there time sensitivity to the rate increase or the fee increases?
The only time sensitivity to this one, is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
I think as we discuss this with the Cemetery Board, I think that the time sensitivity is, as plots are still being sold in lower cemetery and the first section of upper, there's a real desire and interest to make sure we're receiving market rate fees for that. So that's, if there is a sensitivity, it's that. We posed that same question to the board about, given this conversation we're having right now, do we just wait on this fee increase until the middle of this year? Or do we do this in a two-step? And again, per their request, and we certainly wanted to honor that request and their role as the board, they wanted to at least approach us as a two-step.
It was important of them to do the first step of the fee increase, again, wanting to be transparent about what the future discussions will be as well.
Yeah, I, so, and there, can you kind of, I think you said it, but do it again for me, the rationale from the Cemetery Board for wanting to do these as separate steps in the dance?
Yeah, I think the rationale was, again, recognize that our current fees are really not at market. We are continually selling plots in the lower and the upper cemetery, and so this first request really is about more of a market rate adjustment, right, of a fee increase. It just so happens to be happening while we're having this bigger conversation with our management partner and framing up this management agreement and revenue plan.
Councilmember Walsh?
Jeff, can you give me a sense of how many plots, for example, on average, we would sell a quarter, just to get a sense of how, how important this is?
I'd love to tell you that. I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know.
I can send that along with the comparison.
That would be fantastic. Yeah.
Deputy President Baptiste?
I was just gonna say, I think when we're talking about market rate, so it'd be great to have any email, but I would, I would attach it to the presentation. I could see all of the council members probably having a similar question about the data around market rate.
Are you saying you'd like that sent out to all council?
In, just to put within the presentation.
I think as we, as we amend the agenda bill from tonight's conversation, we can add that.
Perfect. Thanks.
Yeah, I think that's absolutely correct.
Okay, will do.
Okay. Any, any other questions for our parks leaders? Any discussion? Any thoughts? Council, Deputy President Baptiste?
Well, I think that has been some time since, since we've taken a look at this, and in light of the other work that's going on, it seems to make sense that, that we're taking a look at this. And that would, really, my, my largest question was just about if we're, if we're looking at having an increase in those fees, how does, how does that compare across cities that, or, or the market that we would be looking at? So this seems to make sense, but it would be important to me to be able to take a look at some of that data.
So, so I, I don't know if I'm being a contrarian or not, but it seems to me that the important thing that we need to do for the long-term sustainability of the cemetery is the revenue plan and the cemetery partner agreement. I think those are absolutely essential for the long-term viability and maintenance of the cemetery. And buried in that is, is a discussion around, does the cemetery, I think you called it an enterprise, so does it pay for itself, or is there a subsidy that the city provides in maintenance? And what does the cost look like? And I believe those are the questions you're gonna answer with the revenue plan. Nods. And if we're really talking about having the revenue plan and the cemetery partner agreement discussion in just a few months, there's this part of me that would like to defer making a rate change until we can put it in the context of that larger, longer-term discussion about where does this belong? And I don't think that we are gonna, you know, be in a situation where we would raise it, you know, too much this time, but I don't want to be in a position where we raise it, and then a couple months from now, to make the revenue projections work out, we raise it again. So I'd like to just, you know, if we're gonna do it, just be, do it once and done. So that's kind of where my heart goes, and I guess basically my head goes there, but it seems to me that... And I guess maybe my head goes there, but it, it seems to me that we're so close to doing the big deal that I, I don't, I don't understand the rationale for wanting to break it into two parts. So that's where I'm just struggling, so. Councilmember Walsh.
So we talk about the fee increases coming from wanting to be at a similar, similar standpoint to other city-owned cemeteries, and that our previous fees did not reflect that. I'm wondering, in the almost 10-year period since this has last been evaluated, is there any sense of what the cost is? Like, do these, does the $1,000 fee for a full-size grave, which is the current fee, does that cover our costs? Are we losing money on it by not having it at the 1,500 rate? And where does that $1,000 go? Does that go to our cemetery partner? Or does that go into a specific cemetery fund?
It goes into literally the cemetery fund. That's what it's called, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that fee does go into there. And, and this is a great, great question, and I think to answer it really, I think, bluntly, the reason why we think it's so imperative to do this revenue plan is when you look at our costs, and I'm going to put costs in quote, meaning annual maintenance, capital, the need to have some degree of capital reinvestment in that cemetery, and then this long-term stewardship piece, no, it's not. It's, it is not, it is not enough revenue to fill all of those three buckets when we really look at the, again, the health of that cemetery fund.
So that fee is not just going to digging the individual grave? It obviously is metered over a period of time. So maybe one other question there is, what's the difference between the grave plot fee and the maintenance fee? Are they supposed to cover different sets of costs where one would cover just what's needed to, you know, enter a body, whereas the other would cover, you know, kind of that longer term or maintenance? Is there any sense?
I got it. The, yeah, good question on that. The, yeah, the, the plot fee is for that piece of ground, right? For that person to have that space. And just like I said, the maintenance fee is for that long-term care. It's a fee associated with the long-term care of that space. You know, mowing, edging, it's, it's a fee that's charged to help offset that piece as its lifetime.
So do we know if those two individual fees at this point or at the increased amount cover the costs?
No, we don't know. And that's, again, why the revenue plan is so important in that when we look at the balance of the cemetery fund right now, and before we open this last section in upper cemetery, it's why we think this is such an important part of our work plan this year, is to really dig in and do that analysis.
Deputy President Bateese.
So I, I know that we, we touched on, on council member Ray's question a moment ago, a little bit, but I'd like to go back to it. So can you talk about the timing and, and are there, are there cons? And can you explain what those cons would be to, to wait and have this all be coordinated together, to be able to do the studies and the work that needs to be done, and then analyze all of this, understand what the costs are, and then bring the fee forward?
It's a great question, and I don't think there are major cons to that. That really becomes council's will and council's, council's pleasure. We are merely also wanting to be responsive to the cemetery board and their role as a board to have some fiduciary oversight to the cemetery fund, that we wanted to bring this and have this conversation. If at the end of the day, we want to couple these, you as council want to couple these, then we can have that conversation with the board and continue to expedite our conversations. We've met three times with the Flintoffs. We've had very, very, very productive conversations about revenue plan and this management plan, and so we really have some good momentum going that way, so.
Would it be possible to accelerate the revenue plan, to, to do that sooner? I'm just, I'm compressing this window.
Yeah, define, accelerate, right? We, we can try. I, I guess that's what I, I would say, we could, we could try. Again, if it's council's pleasure to, to bring these together, that we would give our best effort to try and expedite.
Yeah, so where, where I'm going is, and I don't have any trouble with the revised fees and that are, that are outlined in the agenda bill, but if we could couple these to the revenue plan and we could lay out and say, we have a, we have a finite resource in the two cemeteries that we have. We're going to run out of space, and, and this is, it pays for itself now because we are selling plots now, but it's when we run out of plots to sell that we run into a rub, which is the revenue is going to stop, but the, the maintenance is going to continue in perpetuity. And so, Brian, you brought up this, this notion of creating an endowment that becomes the, the plunder of maintenance on the facility in perpetuity for, you know, a long time. And from my perspective, it would be a more compelling argument or a more compelling discussion to have about what should the new fees be based on a revenue model that says, look, this is not an arbitrary number. This is the number that gets us to a place where this becomes a sustainable facility. That's, that's, that's where I am driving to and trying to draw these two things together, because I think that this is an interesting market rate one, but maybe it's too high. I don't know. Because what I really want to know is, what do we need to do to sustain this in the long term? And I also want to have a, a discussion at council about, is this something that is a self-funded thing, or is this something that there's a subsidy that the city provides? And I want to be open and transparent and that if this is something that is the will of the council to do that, that we are, we are overt about that will. Councilmember Walsh, I've got to get used to this.
I know. So looking on our council work plan items, I'm seeing the Hillside Cemetery Management Agreement coming up in Q3, so July, August, September. So that's a little bit more of a gap than saying it's going to come in June, and, you know, things get pushed as stuff comes up. So I think as much as I want to have the larger conversation, I also want to respect the fact that we have not increased in 10 years and do not want to see a loss of revenue in that six-month-plus period of time. So I would be amenable to the idea of it going to council and having a larger conversation, because I wouldn't necessarily want to rush the data gathering and the larger conversation about what the revenue model should be. I'm open either way, but I think it would be valuable to have that larger conversation.
I, I think the question for us is to whether or not to, I mean, I think the, well, the full council will decide on this issue, that's for sure. But the recommendation coming out of the committee should be, do we think that we should modify the fees as presented in the ordinance? Should we modify them at some level different than what's in the ordinance? Or should we defer the ordinance until we can synchronize it with the revenue plan? So I think there's a couple of options for us to, to consider. Councilmember Walsh.
So I think the thing that would make the big difference for me is the number of graves sold. So if the number of graves sold in that six-month period until we're going to have a chance to do this is five versus 50, that's going to make a difference to me in potential lost revenue. So that's the missing piece of this conversation. And if I err on the caution side of, if there are 50, I don't want to lose that revenue in the meantime, I would be more apt toward that decision, depending on what the data would show.
Oh, I was going to say, I, I agree, and I, and I would, I would like to see those options presented. For me, at this point, I'm not, it's really, really good questions about what those numbers are, but waiting, especially if we could accelerate a little bit and get that maybe into Q2, waiting that amount of time to go through this work plan, I, I would be okay with. But presenting those options, I think, is important. The one that I had the question about is, is having, obviously, the council always has an option to take a look at the rates and say, no, we think there should be more. But I'm not sure, I guess I'm questioning whether that, that is a question coming from, from this committee. For me, it seems that we should have had two, even though, yes, I understand, there would always be that third option, but it, it doesn't sound like something that we've discussed as wanting to present that alternative.
To agree with both of my esteemed colleagues here, that's a really important piece of data, which is, what's the opportunity cost? What are we losing if we don't take this action? And, and so a fourth option that I think we have coming out of this thing is, is to refer back to committee without recommendation, you know, to say, look, we, we looked at this, there's some pretty key data that we identified that, that is necessary to make a complete decision, and that there are things like, what are the market rates? And, and, you know, how does this compare? And what, how many plots are we really talking about here? So what is the loss, potential lost revenue of waiting? Because I think there is a, from my perspective, value in, in linking these things together. And so the question is, what's the cost of getting that value? So I, I don't have the data to do that. Jeff?
Yeah, and that was going to be my suggestion, is, is it sounds like there are some data points that we can provide, both in terms of rate of grave sites sold. We can also continue, as we continue our conversations with Flintoffs, get a real dialed-in sense of when we think we can bring this and deliver this to begin that conversation, and then come back to committee, to services in March, and continue that conversation.
Are you thinking of that? Let's do that. Let's, I mean, since we do have a little bit, little bit of time, I think we can make a better decision if we can get those, a few additional data points, and then we'll look to see you in our March meeting and then look to take this to council in, probably do the second week, the second meeting in March.
Yeah.
So it'll be a, a few weeks after the original plan date, but I don't think that will be automatic, and I'll let Deputy President Bateese figure it out on the planning calendar.
Sounds good.
And meanwhile, we will keep working on this, on this important work, so it doesn't, doesn't slow us down at all.
Yeah, no, I think, I think it's, I think it's great. I think it's a, a necessary discussion to have, and I think there's a lot of really good thinking and work going into it, and I, I appreciate all the work you guys have done. All right? Thank you, and we'll see you in, again, in March. We'll look forward to that. And any other comments from the committee?
Just to welcome council member Walsh to Services and Safety Committee. We're really happy to have you here. Happy to be here.
Yeah, be completely. Okay, with that, we are adjourned.